Would like to call to order the March 18th, 2019 Board of Commissioners Cabarrus County Regular Meeting. Welcome. It's good to have such a large crowd with us tonight. First, if you would please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are very happy to have with us this evening for our invocation Pastor Joe DeJesus from Concord First Assembly. Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you tonight and for your purpose for this meeting. We know that when we are gathered together in spite of our agenda, you always have a divine agenda. And we love you for that, Father, because we know that even when we have done what you have asked us to, the results are so much greater than we ever could have imagined. So even in our failed attempts, Lord, you blow us away with your faithfulness to provide what we need, and our prayer today is that your will be done through this meeting. Take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can, steer our intentions to align with your righteous will, and remind us of your faithful provision when our efforts fail us or fall short. Into your hands we commit ourselves. We pray today in the name that is above all names, the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Would like to also welcome our Youth Commissioner Sarah Houston. It's good to have you with us tonight. First item is approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
A motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we now move to approval of the agenda, which you also have before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the pages, changes on page thirty-six?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes as well. And we move to recognitions and presentations. And first up, we have a proclamation for National Donate Life Month for April 2019, and Commissioner Schu will read that proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation for National Donate Life Month 2019, whereas more than 114,000 men and women and children in the United States currently need life-saving organ transplants, and more than 3,000 of those people are North Carolinians, and whereas an average of 22 people awaiting transplants die each day because there is a severe shortage of donated organs, and whereas every 10 minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list, and whereas providing facts about donation and dispelling misinformation and myths are key to increasing the number of people who sign up as donors, and whereas the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles, NC DMV, plays a critical role with over 5 million North Carolinians in the state's donor registry having registered when receiving a driver's license or state ID card, and whereas one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people and improve many more lives through tissue and cornea donation, and whereas North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation, discuss their wishes with their family, and sign up as donors via the North Carolina DMV or online at www.donatelifenc.org/register. And whereas residents of Cabarrus County have been touched by donation as recipients of life-saving transplants and as many and as members of donor families who have literally given others a second chance of life. And now it be resolved, we, the members of Cabarrus Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 to be National Donate Life Month in Cabarrus County and urge our residents to give serious thought to the importance of eye-organ-tissue donation and to consider joining the North Carolina Donor Registry, and further to notify their family members that they have done so, adopted this 18th day of March 2019. And this will be signed by Chairman Steve Morris, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. And I usually do this pretty much every year because most of you already know that I am a recipient of two different organ transplants, a heart transplant in 1995, and obviously that come from a donor from up north somewhere in Michigan. I don't know a lot about the donor, but he was 17 years old. I don't know a lot about his family. I wrote to family, never did hear back from them, and then they tell me that's not unusual. So when you think about it, organ donation is really something special because I've been able to carry on a life that I didn't have. And I also had a kidney transplant in '02 from a living donor. And she's doing fine, I'm doing fine, life's good. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt April as our National Donate Life Month in Cabarrus County.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, in memory of Grant Lavery, a 17-year-old donor, family member of mine, I would like to second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Certainly a worthwhile cause. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I will also add that the Donate Life America flag will be flown at the governmental center here during the month of April to raise awareness of this initiative. Next up, we have a presentation from Extension and Community Association, and I think Pam...
Pat.
Pat is going to start that off. Welcome.
Thank you. Cabarrus County Commissioners, thank you for recognizing Cabarrus County Extension and Community Association, as we're known as ECA, and your continued support of our organization. I'm Pat Wickliffe, ECA Council President for 2018. The 2019 ECA Achievement Program was held February the 23rd. Due to scheduled staff retreat, Commissioners were unable to attend our program, and we wanted to share our highlights. The Cabarrus County ECA Council has provided the Commissioners with a copy of our 2019 recognition program. The Council wishes to thank Commissioner Diane Honeycutt, who was our 2018 Extension liaison representative. There are 11 ECA clubs in Cabarrus County with approximately 225 members. In 2018, the Reimer Club celebrated our 100th anniversary of service to Cabarrus County. The mission statement of ECA is to provide research, information to our members and community from North Carolina State University and A&amp;T University. ECA provides leadership, education, and service to our community. I would like to introduce the 2018 ECA Awards and Recipients. Please stand as I name, as your name is called and be recognized for your award. Club President of the Year, myself, Pat Wickliffe. And I'm from the Reimer Club. Club President of the Year, Country Neighbors, Barbara Looney and her members. Member of the Year, Cindy Koots, and she's from Country Neighbors also, but she's unable to be here tonight. New Member of the Year, Carolyn Wright, she's from Cold Water Club. And our Lifetime Achievement Award goes to Marie Pless from Reimer Club. And our ECA Supporter of the Year is Cabarrus Arena and Events Center Office and Catering Staff Kenny Robinson is the General Manager, and Teresa Smith also works there, one of our members. And our North Carolina ECA State Leadership Award for South Central District is also Teresa Smith. The Cabarrus County ECA Council thanks you for your support of our volunteer organization. And at this time, I call Barbara Looney up to give you a total of our volunteer hours
You know, money speaks a lot, so this year, our club, we donated 42,742 volunteer hours to the county in dollars and cents value, that's $1,055,299.98 that we saved the county.
Thank you. I'm so sorry that we were unable to make the event this year. It's something that I certainly always enjoy, and I always really enjoy getting that big check.
Yeah.
Even though we, even though we can't cash it, it's very valuable, and we certainly understand the value of all those volunteer hours and very much appreciate what you do. And I also see these little boxes up here, and I'm assuming that comes from you as well, so thank you for that also. But we really very much appreciate all you do to make Cabarrus County the wonderful place that it is to live, and you have a lot to do with it. Thank you. Okay, next, we have from Communications and Outreach, Excellence in Communications Awards, and Jonathan Marshall will tell us about that.
I'm gonna ask Kasha Thompson, Londa Strong, and Susan Donaldson to join me. I know they're back there. Cabarrus County's Communications and Outreach Department earned recognition at the 2018 Savvy Communications Awards, which are held by the City-City Communications and Marketing Association. Three CMA is a lot easier to say than that. This particular award recognized the Journeys Magazine, which if you recall, in 2014, when you adopted your Aging Strategic Plan or adopted the Aging Strategic Plan for Cabarrus County, that was one of the pieces of outreach. I mean, I think really as much as anything else, that magazine was intended to show all the different programs that we had that serves our active living adults. Londa, and we've been going through different names, Commissioner Honeycutt knows all about that. But again, this is, this is an achievement, I think, the reason I have all three of them up here. It's not just our communications department which received the award and puts it together, but the contributions that are made to that particular magazine come from our Alps Department as well as other divisions that serve our population, which is 55 and above. It's particularly important, I mean, I see nicely enough the, our friends with ECA here are modeling, reading the magazine for us, but it shows some of our programs, and it's done in a format that's easy to read, that grabs your attention, and we've been able to put that out in doctors' offices, in our own facilities, and many other facilities. And I'm actually going to let Kasha say a few words about that, so you know how far and wide it's distributed.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold today. Journeys Magazine is so much more than what it seems. What it is, is a reflection of our brand, and that collaboration is at the heart of it. And it also embodies everything we do as a staff, and there are three things that we focus on, and that's caring, excuse me, caring, meeting people where they are in life, and treating them with respect. And I think that was what they noted in the publication and the awards, was that we treated our seniors with respect and brought them the information they needed. So without Susan and Londa and a host of other folks, and our amazing graphic designer, Lisa Weedman, this publication wouldn't be quite as successful, but really, it's when it changes the lives of our residents that it makes an impact. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And the newest issue is out this week. I'll also let Susan and Londa speak, but the newest edition is out this week, and you can pick it up at any Cabarrus County office, at the senior centers, of course, and it's available online in a digital format at cabarruscounty.us/seniors and on our Facebook and Twitter, @CabarrusCounty.
I apologize for not wearing the county colors. Please forgive me on that. I didn't, Kasha didn't let me know until a few minutes ago. But we do appreciate all of the work that goes into this magazine. We've had many, many compliments since we've changed, and it provides a much more professional look than the ones that we were putting together ourselves, and we really appreciate it.
I would concur with what Londa said, that it's certainly a much more professional-looking journal, and we've had a lot of people asking about it, and we pass it along that, like Kasha said, that you, they can also reach it online, and they can actually, and all of you can actually get that publication online before we even get it in print. So that's something that's appealing to people as well. But thank you for letting us be here tonight.
I also want to note Pam Mooton is in the audience tonight, and she also makes very valuable contributions, and our Cooperative Extension is one of the departments that contributes on a regular basis, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you, and I think that one of the things that's obvious to everybody that heard that presentation is there's a lot of collaboration that goes on amongst a lot of different groups and different folks to make, to make it, the magazine as successful as it is. So we, we thank you all. Next up, we have a proclamation in honor of Warren Clay Coleman, and I will read that to you now. A proclamation in honor of Warren Clay Coleman. Whereas Warren Clay Coleman, a lifelong citizen of Cabarrus County, March 25th, 1849 to March 31st, 1901, and whereas Mr. Coleman was born into slavery in 1849, he went on to be educated at Howard University, where he studied business, and whereas by 1900, Warren Coleman had become the wealthiest African-American in the state of North Carolina, and whereas he owned and operated Coleman Manufacturing Company in Concord, North Carolina, as well as other retail businesses, homes, and farms throughout the county, and whereas Warren Coleman became a community leader, changing the social, political, and economic environment of Cabarrus County. And now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby pays tribute to Warren Clay Coleman, recognizing his progressive and entrepreneurial life in Cabarrus County. And do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Aye.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And it's certainly all of us, of course, I've never heard Warren Clay Coleman, I always say Warren C. Coleman, but I think that we're all aware of the great contributions that he made to our community, so it's a pleasure to, to pass this resolution tonight. And we move now to informal public comments. We have yellow cards at the end of each row of seats, and we have several that have been turned in. And if you would, come to the podium and speak into the microphone and say your name and address. And first is Janelle Gingrich-Cottle.
Hello again. My name is Janelle Gingrich-Cottle, and I'm from Harrisburg, North Carolina. I represent the Good Samaritan Society and am a taxpayer of Cabarrus County. I prepared a speech today, but I think I'm going to just speak from the heart to all of you. In 2017, I, well, actually, I became aware in 2018 of the public shelter report from the Department of Agriculture. And in this report, Cabarrus County stands as having the most undocumented animals as far as their disposition that I saw in the state. That means that they are not recorded as euthanized, adopted out, returned to owner, et cetera. This number, out of all of it, was 65%, which is 1,799 dogs and cats. I believe that I've researched a lot of you, and I believe that you are people of faith, most of you. And we start the meetings with prayer. There was an old school of thought that said that Christians were given dominion over the earth and its inhabitants. I would like to challenge that theology. We are created to be caretakers of the earth and its inhabitants. Gandhi said that a, the health of a nation and its moral progress can be judged in the way that it treats its animals. My philosophy as a human rights person, as an animal welfare, animal justice activist, is that we are not going to get better in this society without first being kind and transparent about the animals that are in our animal shelters. They are helpless victims that have absolutely no voice. I would like for each of you, as Christians, to consider what it means to be a steward of God's creation, and if it is right to kill, to jail animals. Now, this is a systemic problem throughout the United States. You are not alone. We are not alone. We have to reimagine the whole system, and I believe that the good people here will help me reimagine that. But I'm asking again for the numbers. Where are the animals? Where are 1,799 animals? I spoke with you, Blake. Blake, you handed me over to the county attorney. The county attorney then sent me to the sheriff's department. May I continue?
Yes.
The sheriff's department had me look through piles of records that had rescue information in it with a sheet, a compiled manifest of everything detailing about animals except for where they went. In the state of North Carolina, there are vivisectors, and I'm not sure if you're aware of what that term means, but vivisectors are animal experimenters. There's a lab very close that, to us in Burlington that supplies schools and labs with animals for dissection. I am forced to wonder where these animals are. There are fates worse than death. I would like you to consider, Pam, I know that you are a mother of two cats, you may have yourself companion animals, and I want you to envision your animals in a shelter without a voice and without an advocate to come and speak for them and to take them out. It is highly immoral. And we are not going to get better as a human race until we start learning how to treat the least of these. The least of these are not in God's eyes, the least of these are in humans' eyes, and religion and politics mixed together has done a terrible deed to voiceless, helpless animals. So I ask you to consider 2017. I would like, according to the public records law, the open records law, it states that a name and address needs to accompany every animal's disposition. When they leave that shelter, they have to have an address, according to the state's open record law. They gave me no address. They gave me no address. They gave me files. It was absolutely one of the most ridiculous things I've ever seen as far as compiling records. And two, that's made me curious, curious about 2016. 2016, ladies and gentlemen, looks just as bad as 2017. I have no idea what's happening in 2018, but I can tell you that my experience with the shelter, I'm allowed to film in other shelters with residents of the shelters and ask for an end of the death penalty. I do this in several county shelters, but I am not invited into my own.
Thank you.
Why is that?
Thank you so much.
Please, please get back with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next card is Bishop Roland Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Somebody left their glasses. These yours?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I greet in Jesus' name as usual. I believe as Abraham Lincoln arrived from the dead, he would say, "Things is getting better." I see you got a minority youth with us on the board. I think Dr. King said the dream is coming to reality. I think Mr. Allison Law would say things was looking up. So I want to thank God that things is looking better. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you and your staff for coming to the Dr. Martin Luther King program where events we had in the community. Ms. Honeycutt did call me, she was out of town. Thank God for her and all, all the support from the community here, and thank you for the proclamation, Mr. Warren Coleman. I couldn't say a proclamation too good, so I put "day." But having a downtown sale for Mr. Warren Coleman on Saturday, April 27, noon until 6:00 PM, so we invite y'all to come and, and take part of that. They're gonna have vendors and volunteers to welcome to attend. Great, great, a great day. And like I got to mention, I know they put down two things, but I do want to see the GM theater stay open. It's affordable price when canopies renovate. And we need help with Boba Scotia. And I found out as God gave me my gold for fundraising. So we got different committee. If y'all can get on the fundraiser, be blessed. The city of Concord was there, so they, they in need for help. We trying to get that college back. I don't want to see no elementary school, but I do want to see Boba Scotia. And I'm a man of faith, and I like to take channels to see that school open back up with y'all's support. And I definitely need some white brothers and Mexicans, whoever want to come, to come. And not just a black thing, it's everything, just like we go to y'all's school. Want y'all to come to Boba Scotia College. Be a blessing upon us. And we thank Mr. Schu, you still living here? My body ain't no good for donation. I used it up when I was in the world, but our young people can keep us living, that's good. But I'm ready to go when God come. So donation, donors is very important, I believe that. Our animals is very important. Animals is our best friend. I would have an animal than a llama in my house, because an animal gonna bark and give me time to do what I got to do, call the police to get my weapon, one to two. Even though you're Christian, we got to protect ourselves, even in the military. We just can't lay down our gun and pray. We gonna have to fight. And as people don't believe when I say I'm a warrior, I believe in taking care of my country, fighting for my country, and helping my people, and that's what God wants us to do. And we look for something very important, Charlotte McAbell is doing, people who met crime not guilty yet, they lower their buns. Because you'd be surprised, people lose their job. I had a lady to lose her job because they came on her job and had a warrant there, and she not guilty of it, but according to them, they fired her. So that's not good. But I'm, I'm obedient to rules. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the cards that we have for tonight, so we will now move to our consent agenda. And of course, all of you have a copy before you. Looks like we might have one.
No, it's on the next one.
Okay. Of course, the consent agenda is before you. It's quite lengthy tonight, and these are all items that we have discussed previously at our work session last Monday night. So do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
A motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First up is an offer to purchase county property, and Jonathan Marshall will talk with us about that.
So the additional yellow card you just saw coming up, that is Mr. Benjamin Loveland. He and his wife Jennifer Loveland have offered, requested to purchase some land from the county adjacent to their parcel off of Bradford Road. We went through this at your work session. If you should choose to, this would be a conditional acceptance of the offer that they have made, and there is a copy of that offer in, in your packet. With that conditional approval, and there is a With that conditional approval and their payment of the required deposit, we would begin a ten-day upset bid period, which we would advertise. Any qualifying offer that came in higher, we would restart that bid process, of course, have to get another deposit, and start ten days over each time. Once we've completed a ten-day period without an upset offer, we will bring that back to you for your final consideration. So your conditional approval simply starts that process, it does not make the final decision on it, you'll be, this item will be brought back to you for a final decision. And with that, I had invited Mr. Loveland. I've actually corresponded with him quite a bit by email over the years, but have never met him in person, so I'm glad he stood up, and I'd invite him to come speak to you about this.
Great. Thank you for your time. Just a little clarification, so I already own the four acres in Cabarrus County, and I own the right, well, I have a right-of-way that goes through the county property to access my property, and so that's the property I'd like to purchase. I have a son with autism that we'd like to totally enclose our property so he doesn't wander off, and with us not owning the property in front of us, it kind of makes it difficult not owning it. And so that was the purpose of us coming to you guys, to see if we could purchase that four acres in front of us, so it would take us all the way to Bradford Road, which right now we don't, we have to go through the county to get to our property. And so I'm hoping that comes to fruition and it works out for us, that we are able to control the access into our own property and enclose it off properly, so we can feel a bit safer with our wandering autistic son, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Marshall has explained to you the upset bid process and how that works, and so are there any other questions from anyone? If not, do I hear a motion for conditional acceptance of the offer to purchase?
Aye. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we move to reports, and first, we have updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various other boards and committees. Commissioner Honeycutt.
I have just a few announcements from the Active Living in Parks. The Cabarrus Senior Games, for those fifty or better, it says, if you're an artist or athlete, the registration's going on from now till March 22. The games are April 1st through the 14th. There's a Veterans Breakfast for any veterans who might be interested in Mount Pleasant at the Senior Center, April 8th at 9:00. Archery Clinics, April 2nd and May 7th, and then free classes of a Matter of Balance, which is for fall preventions, and Living Healthy for Chronic Disease Self-Management. So I'm going to give you one number, if you're interested, you can call, and they can put you to the right person for any of those, it's 704-920-3484.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have reports tonight? Okay, and we will move to general comments. Sarah, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
No, I didn't.
Great, well, it's good to have you with us. Are there any other general comments? Okay, hearing none, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A and 3.
That moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.